We'd like to thank you all for joining us here at this board workshop scheduled for today, February the 28th, 2023, 2:00 PM. What we will do, we will start with Mr. Thomas Bowling and then following that, those of you that may have public comments or questions, at that time, we will allow you to come up and that way you will get more than three minutes, you will get ample enough opportunity to express yourself, if that pleases everyone. Okay, are we good with that? All right, thank you, Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Ms. Geyard. Good afternoon, everybody. We're here, let me start over, I don't want to start off a meeting saying we're here today, it sounds like a funeral. I'm actually here to give you an update on just our revitalization plan across the board, but I'm going to save the best for last, the best being Crescent City, because that's where we've had quite a bit of news lately and I'm sure, you know, you've seen it. As a matter of fact, the Palacka Daily News reached out to us yesterday just to get us to comment on some of the things that are going on in the, just in our county. And it's particularly about the location of the proposed location, potentially for the elementary school down in Crescent City. But before I get into that, I just want to do a quick overview of where we are with the entire, with the entire plan. Okay, as you notice, it's a 10-year plan and it's broken down into three phases where we'll build three schools at a time. We'll use special facilities funding for the junior, senior high schools because they are the most expensive and then we'll use the bond dollars to pay for elementary schools and we'll do two at the time. So we're in phase two, I'm sorry, in year two of this 10-year plan. All right, so phase one, special facilities funding is Crescent City Junior Senior High School. Funding for that is currently in the legislature and it was on the governor's initial budget, so our fingers are crossed and we feel very confident that it will be funded and if that happens, we'll start construction on time this summer. Greg, if I say anything wrong, let me know. The bonds, the first two bond schools will be the former site of E.H. Miller in Palacka and then in Crescent City, we initially, when we named the two sites or the three sites for phase one, we named the Miller Middle School Site, but since that time, we have, in addition to some strong opposition by the Historical Society and a few others, we were approached, and I'll get into that in a little more detail, about a potential alternative site and I'll tell you all about that in just a minute. So as it stands right now, where we'll build, where we'll build that school in Crescent City, it's a little bit in flux and that's kind of why we're having the board workshop today, just so you can be completely familiar with everything that's going on. All right, so phase two, special facilities funding, we'll shoot for that particular funding for Interlock and Junior Senior High next. And the next two bond schools, the second Palacka site is still undetermined. We have a few ideas and we're trying to work out the details with those now and when we make that decision, we'll get back to you with that. And then Melrose Elementary is the other. And as a matter of fact, while I'm talking about timelines for making decisions, Greg and I and Travis and other stakeholders will develop a timeline when decisions will be made, whether it be rezoning or whatever happens as a result of new schools and also when we'll announce the locations for additional sites. All right, phase three, special facilities funding will then shift to Palacka Junior Senior High School. Of the three comprehensive junior, senior high schools, we intend to rebuild. Palacka's the most current, so that's why it's last on this plan. Browning Pierce Elementary School and then its sister school, Robert H. Jenkins Elementary will be the other two. Right now, we intend to build on those existing sites, all three of them. Unless we tick somebody off about that along the way, is that a bad joke?
No. It's reality.
All right, so some of the items that are completed for design management, we acquired CRA and a design manager, Greg Kelly, who's to my left. The architects have been chosen for the first three schools. Casper for the Palacka School and for the two, I'm sorry, Crescent City Schools, CRA was chosen. The bond oversight committee, we're receiving applications as I speak. Ashley McCool is receiving those and she'll be reaching out to the board members shortly to finalize that process and those bylaws have already been adopted by the board and its policy. Design advisory committees, those applications will start in a few months. We want to get closer to the time where they'll actually have something to do. And those, the people who will oversee those at the district level, the elementary schools will be Sarah Jean McDaniel and the secondary schools will be JT Stout. And they'll facilitate those meetings and they'll push out additional information about them as we go forward. So as we prepare for construction, we are working on an RFQ for construction management right now and so once we push that out and settle on construction managers for the three sites, wherever they wind up being, we'll present that to the board and it should be upcoming in the next, I don't know, month, maybe a little bit better. We're in the process of doing detailed custodial reports. The ones on the Crescent City Elementary School Site are kind of in whole, on hold right now. We don't want to do a lot of unnecessary work just based on how this whole process shakes out. The Palacka has already been submitted to DOE for cursory review and Crescent City's has already been approved. All those things on the right, topographical and hazard and surveys and geotechnical reports, demolition plans for each site and the timelines, all of that is being developed through Greg's office as well as a conceptual plan for each site. Again, it would look a heck of a lot different at the Miller Site than it would the alternative site and I'll explain why when we get to it. But we did insert into CRA's contract for the Crescent City Elementary Site, if we do shift, we'll renegotiate the terms of that. So CRA won't be able to stick us at that high rate they're sticking to us at the Crescent City Site. Just because it's so much more difficult there, to be fair, it's a small site and it's, we'll have to keep buildings and build around the existing buildings, so very complex plan as well as trying to get the traffic off the road and you name it, retention ponds, you'll earn your money if you have to build there. All right, so let's just talk about very quickly, and you may have seen this before and you may not have, but this is how the new school will be constructed at the Crescent City Site, this kind of looks, this is how we'll do things. We won't have to worry about this with either elementary school in the first round, but we will probably have to, I'm sure, I'm 100% certain, we'll have to develop a plan similar to this with some of the elementary school bills in the latter rounds. But this is the school as it sits now. And the first thing we'll do is construct a new classroom wing, two-story, and then a gymnasium slash band room, which is a two-story building as well. And I'm going to skip ahead here a little bit because you see that third building that popped up in the back, CTE? Because of some appropriations we've put in for, we want to go ahead and build that building right off the back and then Greg, we can get that done, right?
Yeah, this is just a placeholder at DOE so we can modify, change, or anything.
Okay, so this will probably go like that, plus that CTE building in the back and then he'll demolish Building 19, Building 21, and Building 24. And then he'll replace that with an administration and guidance building with a media center and a, media center being the second floor of that and then ESC Wing on the second building, first floor, and then CTE Classroom separate, second floor. Did I say that right, Greg?
Yes.
And then this will be demolished, the administration, the current administration building, the shops, the ag lab, the media center, and then they'll take out those portables as well. And then the final construction would be a classroom, another classroom wing and cafeteria and then the last thing is cleanup, demolish this last portion of the building and then replace it with parking lots and landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. And there's your new high school. What I want to go ahead and point out right here is I've never seen a high school look like that because it's just blocks and that's because they don't look like that. That's just whether, that's the placement of the buildings. The design hasn't been realized yet and that's kind of important, just an important theme that I want you to keep in mind, no matter where we build, the window dressing can look as we want it to look. All right, so let's talk about the Miller Site specifically.
Let me ask you this before we move on. Regarding the high school, class will be in session, school will be in session, but they will be building in areas that are away from the students and then once that phase is done, they're demolished, but these people will have somewhere to move into.
Yes, ma'am, the construction comes first and then the demolition and all that's done without a single kid getting scratched.
There was an order that we built the gym before we tore down the existing gym. We did the cafeteria, we synchronized it to work along those lines. Yes, ma'am.
That's not uncommon to do it that way.
Now, my main concern was the students still being there while this construction is going on and making sure that they are where they're supposed to be.
And there should be no portables or anything, I mean, it's just...
Now Travis Woods took a trip and actually saw all this in progress, right? Cheeplin.
My high school.
Yes.
Just like this, we did it in special facilities, three phases.
An oil machine, well, a machine.
The principal, they went for all of us. He said he was nervous.
Yeah, see, that would be our concern.
That's all the school administrators would be nervous about something like that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I realize that's not the final exact and it's just blocks holding the place of those buildings, but what are we talking as far as square footage difference?
It is, it is a good bit larger. I don't have exact numbers, but I can, I can get them to Travis to give you.
Just from the aerial and the changes, it made it look like it went from being bigger to being smaller and I realized they're maybe two stories.
It's your two stories.
Right, so I was just curious if it's going, because it looks like it's accommodating more parking as well on the property, so I just want to make sure we're not shrinking the size.
No, we are definitely getting larger. I'll get those numbers tuned in the...
And what we were looking at was junior, senior high and really our property would go on to, I guess, Old 17, doesn't it, Travis? A while ago, that's what we were looking.
That's where the baseball field is.
The old, behind the baseball field, it goes all the way to the old hard road back there.
Only one section.
Yeah.
So our goal is no, no portables.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
No portables.
Oh, no portables to begin with, no, absolutely.
What'd you say to begin with? The girl?
Hopefully we'll grow so quickly and, well, maybe that's not a good thing, it just depends.
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but the PE teacher in me sees no fields. I see a softball field that we have, I see a baseball field, I see the practice field is now involved in a, well, the first building, but I see no, I see no practice fields, I don't see a PE pool, outside playground, maybe, maybe back where the tennis courts are.
We can coordinate and work something out there. Again, this was done as an exercise for DOE to get a placeholder for funding. We will come back now and work through it and we'll answer all those questions and work out those issues and figure out where the practice fields are going to be.
And this is not the last workshop. So as we develop things and have an idea where I think we're going, I'll bring it back to the board.
Unless we've sold more of that property, we had purchased, a prior board purchased more property to Old 17 below the baseball field there.
It's really part of the baseball field and almost to where you see the retention pond, that area goes back to Old 17. It's fenced in.
Greg, a lot of that design, design committee would address a lot of that too as well.
Sure, sure, yes, sir, yes, sir, but we talked about below the tennis courts there back, that way we looked at it. There are other areas, but if we need to clear something, we'll work something out with the design committee and bring it back for you.
Okay, we ready?
Yes, sir.
Is that the last we're talking about, the high school?
No, ma'am, at the end, we'll open it up as much as you like. All right, so the Miller Site specifically, there's a lot going on there. Originally, okay, so we have three pieces of property in Crescent City that we own. The current Middleton Bernie Elementary School is one. We can't do the plan that you just saw at Crescent City and build new buildings and then demolish buildings and build at Middleton Bernie because it's too tight. We couldn't even get another portable on that school site unless we put it either on the playground or take out an oak tree. The other properties are the high school, the junior, senior high school, and as you can see, it's already tight, trying to find areas for practice fields, et cetera, et cetera. So there's no room there to put an elementary school. And so the only other place is the Miller Site and that's kind of why we said that that's probably our landing place all along, just because we don't have the funds to go out and buy a bunch of property. And then it has some advantages to it, the disadvantage is the size of it, but the advantage is the auditorium and the gymnasium that we could completely renovate and that's kind of unique for an elementary school and it could be used for community centers, et cetera, et cetera. So we saw the value in that. But again, we had very few options there and so we know that it's located in a historical, how do you, what is it, Greg?
Historic district.
Historical district, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's a National Register Historical District.
National Registered Historical District and it comes with some rules with new designs and I've asked our design manager to take a look at those rules and become very familiar with them because we're in the school district, we're rule followers and so if we have to build at the Miller Site, that site can look how we want it to look or more specifically how the community wants it to look. You know, we don't have any, I've seen a poster with another elementary school from another county sitting side by side and saying, "Don't bring this to Miller" and I think the origin of that was when we were putting out information for the bond, we used that particular school as an example of what a new school could look like. But not all schools will look like that, every school looks different and schools will, and that's why we have a design advisory committee to get input from the public and then design a school to make it look as if, you know, something the public would appreciate, not being eyesore for any community. Greg, do you want to elaborate on that any?
Yes, we have not, any three schools that have been, that are being discussed right now, we have not had any conversations about what they will look like. They can be contemporary, they can look more traditional, we can make them look whatever they, however you'd like for them to look. So we don't have any preconceived notions or ideas as we sit here tonight, so we're open for conversation.
All right, so I've spoken to a lot of people in the community and one particular meeting that I had bared a little more fruit than some of the others that I had, you know, we've heard a million, well, lots and lots of ideas on where to build and how to build and, but sometimes the plans didn't have any practical means of execution. In other words, we had to come up with money that we don't have and go, and you know, I won't go into those, but this particular meeting was with Patrick Kennedy and Charlie Faulkner, I believe both are Crescent City residents and they wanted to reach out and have a meeting with both me and Ms. Pickens. Huh?
Palacka lives in Walacka, Charlie doesn't live in Crescent City.
Okay. One is in Walacka and one doesn't.
He lives outside the city.
Yeah, outside the city.
Okay, so they came in and they met and they wanted to know, they were very interested in the Miller property and they wanted to know why we had to put a school there and I explained everything that I had already, that I've said here and a few more things about student station cost, which may be going away, so that may not, that may not be a thing anymore and it's in the legislature right now, so we're hoping and it's getting some traction as I understand, so I'll kind of leave that out of the equation because we may not be hamstrung by that. But they wanted to know exactly what it would take to move the new elementary school to an alternative site. I said, "Well, number one, it would take property and then we can't, we can't give away lakefront property and not stay out of jail." You know, there've been some suggestions about we just pass it over to someone else. I had a couple conversations with the city manager and he told me even if he gave it to us, we don't have a budget to operate it, we just don't. So they, at the conclusion of this particular meeting, they said, "Well, we'll do this, we'll reach out and try and find a developer who will buy the Miller Site for whatever it's worth and then find some more property and buy it and donate it to the school district so you can build your school on an alternative site." Sounds like it's too good to be true, right? Well, they asked for a second meeting and so the follow-up meeting, they came bearing a developer, his name was, his name is Paul Hassan, he's out of Duval County and he said that he would do essentially that, he would make an offer and then they even identified a site and it's, I call it the hayfield, but it's on the corner of Union Avenue and 308, Highway 308. So if you leave Middleton Bernie, out of the parking lot, turn right and go down to Union Avenue as if you were going back to the high school, if you made a right, it's that property right there in the corner and it's just, it's a giant hayfield, you can't miss it, it has the big rolled up bundles of hay there.
How many acres?
It's, I think the entire site is...
The entire site is by that one under, a good over 77 acres.
I think it depends on how much that they'd want to...
Yeah, he's not talking about, he's talking about acquiring the 77 acres, but not giving us the entire 77 acres. I think I would ask for 30 to 35 acres.
What's the state require for elementary?
They require about 21 to 25 acres.
21, that's what I thought.
Something like that. Usable acres, let me emphasize usable.
So I mean, it's a great looking site, as a matter of fact, I mean, this is quite beautiful, desirable, it's right down from where the existing elementary school is.
Phil, if I may, a couple of, a couple of caveats on that is that years ago, a prior board helped, participated with the county to bring city water and sewage from, I guess it's 309, that's where, 308, down Union Avenue to the high school. So we didn't have to run a spray field. So we've got city water and sewage access plus the bus compounds there. If a school were to be built adjacent or in that immediate locale, just the diesel fuel and wear and tear on buses alone would all add up. I mean, it just, that's just a thought down the road. When I first heard this, I thought, "Well, that makes a lot of sense," but it's just something would have to be calculated at some point.
And they, and they said that they would, without a cost, give us this 35 to 40...
He said he would come back and make an offer and he would donate enough land for the school, yes, ma'am. That's what, that's what he said, he said, "Give him a little bit of time to put together a package and he would be back in touch with us." So with that knowledge and everything else that's going on in Crescent City, we started scrambling. We, on the board's agenda today, we have an updated resolution to be able to sell the Miller property if we do get that offer. We also have an appraisal ordered and Travis, I understand you're meeting with the appraiser on Friday. So we're positioning ourselves in case there is an offer to actually bring a sale back before the board to be executed.
And isn't it required that an appraisal, appraisal is done of our property to be able to sell it? Doesn't the state require that?
Yes, sir, it's, they're doing it Friday.
Okay, who's the appraiser?
Whoever did the other schools, I don't remember their names.
Okay, all right, and so I'm clear, so Mr. Hussain is interested in purchasing the current Miller Site?
Correct.
And then donating?
That site.
A tract, the other tract?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it sounds, it sounds a little too good to be true, but as of right now, that's what he's saying.
Well, yeah, in full disclosure, Madam Chairman, yeah, I've been having conversations with the mayor and the city manager off and on for several months and, you know, I've continued to tell them, "I agree with you as a land use planner, that's not the best place to put a school" and early on, you know, I discussed that and said, "I don't think the city wants it there or the commission, you know, was interested in having it there." And, you know, unlike years and years ago where community schools were small and the neighborhoods were made up of families that had kids, that's not the situation there nor in any of these other historical areas, I mean...
The old baby boomer schools where kids...
Yeah, they're moving it to the suburbs and what's happening is you get an older population in those historical areas. At any rate, you know, I kept telling them, you know, "Find a buyer and we'll figure something out." So I'm glad I hadn't heard this, so I'm, I'm very happy to hear.
That was exciting news for all of us and I hope, I hope we can build the school on this side.
And that's why on the appraisal, we would, anything less than, less than, or less than 90%, we would definitely bring that back to you, but, you know, we definitely want to, that's why we need the appraisal, we want to, you know, get the maximum amount from that appraisal as possible.
So Mr. Hussain has a great job ahead of him.
Well, I know that prior boards have allowed the city to, I think, or to put a dock, a walkway down there along the river, the lakefront and I don't know if it's still there or not.
No, I don't think it is.
It may be gone now, but that was, that was some years ago.
We're definitely, you know, just to let you know, we talked a lot about it, but, you know, we definitely are trying to work with the city and everyone else trying to make this work, but at the same time, you know, we have an obligation too and we have, we have limited finances on what we can do as well, so I think this is a good opportunity if it works out.
And timeframe, that is my other concern, you know, based on our schedule and our bonding.
So I asked Greg to come up with a drop dead date, are you still working on that or how long can we push this all back?
Yesterday, I sent you a tentative schedule. I put together a schedule for E.H. Miller because right now, that's the cleanest one, we know where it's going and we can figure out, there's no variables right now with it. So we put something together and if I gave an adequate time to design the school and adequate time to build the school, we finish it toward the end of June in '25, which is great with occupying in August of '25. That works really good. So I'm going to tell you, if we get out another six, seven days or so, August of '25 will be in jeopardy, so we need the next 30 to 60 days to figure out something.
Well, we need the appraisal as soon as we can get it then.
Yes, sir.
He said Friday, I think he said.
Well, they meet on Friday.
We'll walk through and compile everything and get it back.
But essentially, they're not, I mean, they're appraising the property, the buildings are not going to be, I mean, is that part of the appraisal?
It would have to be, but, but, you know, they'd make their money, most of them are going to tear the building down and then they're going to wind up, I would assume, selling the concrete and bricks and whatnot.
Now, Mark, you had something to report about, you know, just realtors talking amongst each other and in your world, an offer was made on the hayfield already, correct?
That's what I was told this morning, that Mr. Hussain, his agent had submitted an offer that had not even been looked at yet, first thing this morning. I don't know where it's at, where he's really thinking.
But again, that was for the hayfield.
That they're talking and that's good news.
Now, my question is, the August 25, technically, those children are in school, right? I mean, they could, we could begin the school year still at Middleton Bernie if we had to, if we had to.
Well, I'm thinking maybe when you're wrapping up, even if this one is running behind schedule, you could maybe start the next ones in the subsequent rounds.
There will be ways we can work around that and districts face new schools in all the time, so it's not, it's not impossible. So it's not, it's not impossible to do and it's, in the scheme of things, it is very close to, to moving most of it.
And we've done, we've done it here before.
Start a school year in, in Crescent City out at, at Middleton Bernie and then move to the wherever we move.
Nor would I, but I also don't want to put a, um, a sixty-day deadline on a, on a deal that is essentially probably much better for Crescent City and for the new Crescent City elementary school. I don't want us to, to put a drop dead date of sixty days and then, you know, things just still aren't really fixed. I, I'd, I'd hate to see that happen. So-
Well, the, I mean, with the board's, I mean, just overall consensus, and I'll seek it right now. I mean, I can see this to its end and then we can try and make up time if, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm kind of looking for consensus. And what I mean, see this to its end, um, leave it on the market until this developer says he's going to either buy it or not.
That's, well-
But until.
Well, y'all go ahead. You know, I, I'm, I'm one that says, you know, you show me the money. You know, and property's only worth what you can, the best you can get out of it, you know? So then you have to decide, is it worth what's been offered for it? So Phil, you go ahead.
Well, the other thing to consider too, I mean, again, we, we had this conversation earlier. We want to maximize whatever, uh, income we can get from out of the property for the simple fact that we're giving up an auditorium and a gym at the current site. Not that we could build that exactly there, but we might could be able to enhance that property with that additional funding.
I, well, that's, and that's what I meant. You're, you're echoing what I tried to say.
Right.
So, you know, in, in being a realist or having worked on some pretty big projects, um, yeah, I mean, a thirty-day timeframe for him to do his due diligence, I mean, obviously, that's the most valuable property in Crescent City vacant property now, period, and maybe in South Putnam, other than Willaka, uh, because of the waterfront and, you know, what the, the downtown revitalization, the Main Street program and all the initiatives that have been, have been initiated down there. So, um, so I don't, I don't, I don't want to, you know, I mean, I think that easily they could make a decision in thirty to, in the maximum sixty days. And Charlie Faulkner and I go way back. We, we've worked on projects over the years and, uh, he's, uh, he's a great guy, great engineer, great character. He's got some great stories.
Having, having been through this for so many years, it's not uncommon to have to displace students while you're building on a site. I mean, that's, you, you just do it and, and it, you, you find ways to do it and, you know, and with, with the new state parameters on school safety and safety standards and that, we, we need new, new facilities for our kids to be in line with what's being required now, but-
Good news is it's just right down the street from the, you know, the, the alternative site would be right down the street from the existing one, so.
Yes, it, it would calculate, I'm telling you, diesel, buses, transportation, the whole nine yards would, would make a lot of difference.
I, I, obviously I think it's great. Um, but what you said was follow it through till there's an offer on Miller. Like if he's maybe already made a, an offer on the, the hayfield property, then, um, then really if he donated us the acreage, even if that person didn't decide that he didn't want the Miller property, he just wants that property, you know, all of the, the property that the, uh, that the family owns there, then that-
What's stopping us from getting started?
The only thing that's stopping us is that it's, we can't do the enhancement to the school that we would, but is that a deal breaker?
The, one, one attractive thing about, um, him buying the Miller property is it's him buying the Miller property. Um, I, we, we just have a hard time leaving a lot of, um, turnkey schools abandoned. And, 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 and there's a million different reasons why and I'm sure you know, but, um, we're, 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 we have the desire to do that less and less. And so that's why we're, most of our, or everything else, um, going forward will be at a, a current site.
Well, I, I do agree with Ms. Pickens and what she's saying is that if he wants to donate twenty-five acres of the seventy-seven acres to the school district and we can go forward, I mean, um, that money from the sale of that property could build an auditorium slash gymnasium. I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about a, a pretty significant amount of money.
You mean if the Miller property is sold?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know what the property appraiser has to praise for, but you know, it's, that's whatever it is. Mark, do you know?
Almost four point five, four point four.
Yeah. I mean, so you could build a pretty nice gymnasium auditorium for that. I mean, so, yeah, I, I like your idea. I mean-
But it, so it's not a, if he donates us the land, but then decides that-
He don't want to buy the property.
Right. That should not be a deal breaker for us.
His, his motive is obviously he wants to develop that prime property, you know, and that's the reason for the other.
And then, you know, then you get to thinking the tax benefit for the, the city of Crescent City would be tremendous. But we're thinking more along the lines of school and-
That's where we're in the business.
You know, would we need somebody to donate us that property? No, we could go look for property, but I, I don't think, I think we need to see this through and see what, what opportunity there is here.
Right.
That's just my, my feeling.
Well, I think that, Madam Chairman, that, that, uh, that, you know, David, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, from a timeframe standpoint, if we want kids to be in school August of twenty-five, then, you know, our options are pretty much tied down to getting that al- alternative site now and moving forward with it.
Well, that, that's what I, I didn't, didn't diminish. That wasn't be diminished because, I mean, we can transport food to a site if they had to shut down cafeterias and they're working on it. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we've done before that can be done again.
Okay.
But sounds like the gentleman is really interested if he has made an offer on the hayfield. So preferably it will work out, but I don't think we, we are in a position to go out looking for property ourselves. We're not. So-
We don't, right now, we don't have the, the funding source for that.
Right. And, and that's not what we in the business is doing, so.
So I, I mean, I, I agree. They're trying to meet our needs and we've, Thomas has explained to them what our needs are and I think, you know, they're, they're trying to do that. It's not a done deal. It's kind of like, we got to see some money, we got to see something before we can proceed.
David, David, show me the money.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, when it comes to, uh, you know, selling property, you, you, you say, you know, you say what it's worth and then who, who's got the money, you know, and, and it's what you get knit for it.
Madam Chair, that's all a prepared, um, information that I have. If you want to, I'll be here if you want, you know, whether, however you want to proceed.
All right. That will be our questions and then we would certainly want to allow, uh, Mr. Danny Miller.
If I may please, uh, wait until the school board meeting, just me.
Oh, yeah.
I was unsure of the format.
Oh, okay. Now, at the school board meeting, you're going to have three minutes, but I see you've asked-
I'll keep it short.
For a waiver. We, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Um, I, I have, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. And then the lady here.
I just have a question about the high school property. So, so that may, this may not be the right time.
Yeah, go ahead.
I-
Yeah, go ahead. This is-
Okay, so, um, my question is, our first, um, building is going to be on the area that when Mr. Miller went to school was a swamp. Okay. Um, what are we doing? How can I, as a board member, be satisfied that in twenty years that that building is not going to be in the shape that the seventh and eighth grade building is now? Or it's a high school building now?
We started out doing soil borings there to, A, figure out what the issue was with the buildings that, that are, that are failing there. We just soon discovered that there was some settlement, some movement there, which led us down the path. We did a couple more soil borings out in the middle of that field that's there to see what it is. Um, we are taking in measures to, with our, uh, structural engineer. I don't know if that is some kind of large footings right now at this moment. I don't know if it's pilings. I don't know if it's, but we have, we have built on a lot worse sites than that. I've, I've got a school in Panama City that's on wooden pilings right now. I've got a school in Marathon down in the Keys that's on actual concrete piles that was, uh, eight feet up in the air. So whatever we need to do there, I have already started working with DOE to get that money in the budget for the process.
Are you, are you speaking about Crescent City High School? Okay, yes.
Yep. We were aware, something, the way that site drops off there, I, I just, day one, when I saw those buildings had the cracks in them, I realized there was movement going on there.
Danny may know, or Mark, I, I was under the impression Mr. Franklin Gauthier may have donated that property to build a high school years ago. Is that, do you?
That's what I, that's what I thought is.
And so it, it, you know, it's all, it was woods and the great Gauthier family, a pioneer family like the Millers and the Pickens and all of us that are from here, they, they, uh, gave the property in, in, in the forefront. And it's turned out to be a, it's going to be a very more centralized location now than what's happening in Willaka. You know, it, it just makes good sense if, if this works out.
And Greg, you're primarily talking about the building that's, uh, closest to the, uh, football field. Right. Just, just for reference.
That would have been the, that would have been the damper part of the area.
Seriously, when I started in the eighties, I didn't even use it for P E because there were so many holes. And then when they built the, when Dixie, they brought, I, I cannot even tell you how many loads of dirt.
Yeah.
So I don't want to, you know, I mean, there are problems with the areas in the south end that, you know, are not very stable. And so I just, I don't know. I just want to be a hundred percent sure that, that, that's, it can be built there.
Right. Cree- creek's probably too strong a word, but there is some water that runs right down the middle of that. And I've talked to DOE already about money to divert that around and, and get that out of the equation and everything too.
Okay.
So your soil borings have found, I mean, uh, from the engineering standpoint that, um, the base below the superficial, um, soles is, is pretty solid?
It actually out where the fields are, where we're going to build, there's, there's some area out there we're going to have to deal with as you go down. It, it is up on the hill, up on the hill, that is loose. So we're probably going to have to pull that out and repack that. But whoever put that in didn't do a good job packing it down there and getting it settled.
Okay.
Travis, it's a, I mean, it's water running through that. It's a huge culvert underneath. I don't know how deep it is, but it's, there's water.
When I said creek, creek may be too strong a word, but there's water running through there.
It's a seepage drain. It runs through there and that, I know that that was over many, many years it, it's been filled, you know? But I know that it can be, like you were talking about, you can, if you have to dig it out and repack it, you can figure out a way to do it.
We'll put all that in culverts and divert it around out of the way, so.
Okay. We do have a request from Mrs. Lisa Kane DeVito. If you will come, state your name and give your address for the records.
I'll see if this one, hey, Phil.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Gilliard and school board members. My name is Lisa Kane DeVito. I reside in Crescent City at one oh eight South Main Street, uh, zip three two one one two. I get my mail at P O box two eighty. Um, thank you for this comment time. Um, there's a lot of new information today. I have notes written all over the place. I was not expecting this presentation. The first thing I would like to ask is that, um, if it's possible that a copy of the presentation be made available to the public. Um, and that's been done in the past, I think. Uh, secondly, I would like to say that, um, some people here are aware, I'm a member of the Crescent City, uh, Commission. Um, I'm not here representing the commission because there are many things that have been discussed here that we don't have a position on. So, um, I'm here mainly in my individual capacity and also I am a member and a board member of the Fruitland Peninsula Historical Society. The first thing I wanted to say today is that, um, I'm here primarily because, um, the Historical Society learned that the school board turned in an application to the Department of Education for the demolition of several buildings on the current Miller Middle School site. One of them is a major contributing structure to our National Register Historic District. That is the main administration building. I think it's building five or six, building one. No, it's building one. Our National Register Historic District in Crescent City is very important. It was established, uh, by the city and a committee of, uh, citizens in nineteen ninety-five. It's approved by the U S Department of the Interior, um, which the, um, federal government through the National Park Service, their documents and figures and the reason for, um, historic preservation, federal tax credits. One of the reasons is of course because of the importance of history. The other is that historic buildings and historic districts are very important to the economics of an area. That is why, one reason federal tax credits are given for historic buildings. We do not need to lose any more of our historic buildings. And, um, so I don't know, um, I don't know why this building was put on the demolition block before there are plans for the site. This site is about a forty to fifty foot slope to the water. Um, I heard today that there will have to be, um, soil studies or investigations about the topography. Um, there's a commercial site down the street that was, um, given a planned unit development designation at least a year and a half ago, and they haven't been able to make any progress because their holding ponds weren't big enough for the amount of paving they wanted to put in. So, um, the bottom line is, um, I'm very concerned that this building is already scheduled for demolition. And, uh, obviously, um, many residents, as well as you have the resolution from the Historic Preservation Society. I'm, I'm just stunned and not understanding why it's scheduled for demolition when you don't know exactly what is going to be built, how it's going to be built or where it's going to be built. Also on that property, well, just to back up a minute, I believe one of your, um, representatives here said that, uh, they want to, it might, might have been Mr. Bowling, I don't recall, said that there are rules as far as new construction that go with the National Register Historic District. That is very true, but you can't replace a contributing structure. That tears a big hole in the district and, um, as well, uh, I heard, um, Commissioner, school board member Pickens say, um, maybe don't put a sixty-day drop dead date on this site. To me, that sounds like a wonderful idea. This is a very important part of our town. Uh, we're only two square miles. This is right in the middle. As, um, Mr. Leary said, this Miller, current Miller Middle School site, um, it's really in a residential neighborhood. It abuts our, it either is in or abuts our community redevelopment area. Traffic is always an issue. We would like to see the greatest care taken with this location. And one thing that concerns me very much and has concerned me ever since the discussion of building a new school started, was that, uh, really the, the decision and the development of what should be done with the Miller School site should have been done in conjunction with the city government and the citizens of the city of Crescent City. And this has never happened. The first time I learned about the plans for a new school were at a Rotary meeting. Um, Ms. McCool and Mr. Surrancey were there. It was about a year and a half ago. And, um, we were told, the Crescent City Rotary was told about the plans for the bond issue and the new school. And I asked at that time, did they know about the, um, Historic District? And Ms. McCool said they knew that one of the buildings or more was historic and that they would do everything they could to preserve that main administration building. Neither the Historic Society nor the City Commission has had any discussions with school district staff. And I think that was counterproductive for everyone. As well, um, there's been one community forum, um, involving the public and the Historical Society- And the Historical Society and members of the community wanted it to be specifically about the Miller Middle School. It was a much larger forum, and there's not really been, um, planning between the City Commission and the school board staff. And I'm very troubled by this because now we're under the gun as to your construction deadline and the needs of the children, which is very important. But had we had these discussions in twenty twenty-two, that would've been the time. Because Crescent City, um, I've been told, uh, from our CRA, we do have the ability to bond. Um, we do have the ability to go to the legislature and ask them to assist us with economic development funding. There have been quite a few grants from the Department of Economic Opportunities, and we could've investigated looking into one. Um, and as well, we could've talked to the neighborhood about, um, how do you feel about the increase in traffic? There are just, there are a myriad of issues to be considered, um, that I think, um, have been raised with Mr. Bowling and are too many to discuss here. But, um, I think we need to have that community discussion and the, the discussion with the, the City Commission. So anyway, please, um, do everything you can to protect our Historic District, to look out for as well as the welfare of our children. And by the way, we do have young families moving to Crescent City now. And they live within walking distance of, um, both school sites, but that is a very positive development. We are starting to be a younger community again. Um, so please work with us. Um, I know discussions have been had with the city manager. Very little information has been forwarded to the Commission. Um, and we are, we are a Commission governed, um, city. So, um, that's what I'm asking, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And, um, I know Mr. Bowling heard. Yes.
Well, I just had.
Okay.
I, I could've swore I, I'd heard in a previous meeting, maybe before I took office, that, that you were meeting with, um, the city manager and the mayor, and that there've been ongoing discussions about, um, building the site, you know, building the school. Um, isn't that correct? I mean, I, I could've swore I heard that.
Uh, I did, I did talk with the, uh, city manager. It was, uh, more informal than anything. I did meet once, um, and they have never been fans, um, with developing that or rebuilding that site as a school. Um, I think their interests, um, are a little bit different. Down in Crescent City, you, you have two schools of thought. You have those, uh, citizens who want it to be redeveloped. And, uh, you know, everything, um, Ms., Mrs. DeVito said about the historic buildings, I don't know that this developer has any of that notion in mind when he makes an offer on the property. Um, and then it'll be his property to do as, as he wishes, you know. Some people want, um, to redevelop downtown. They, they like to see that reimagined, that site, the Miller site reimagined as perhaps, uh, a marina or, or just homes. Um, but, but just something to get it back on the tax roll, uh, and something that fits the neighborhood. And that didn't, doesn't necessarily speak to the preservation of building one. Um, but I think the, the mayor and the city manager are more from that school, um, than just preserving it and leaving it as it is and whatever else.
But there's been an ongoing discussion, I mean, going back to last year, uh, last summer, um, when, when things were kind of being put in place with the district about, you know, our options, you know, being very limited.
Any, any, any place or any meeting, any audience that they've asked of the superintendent or myself, we've shown up.
Right.
And, uh, and we, we developed a plan and we rolled it out and we sought public input. We've had board workshops. Um, we've gone to different places in the community. We've gone to just about every civic organization. Um, and we've heard from a lot of people. And then we put a plan out and, and, you know, and it was on a ballot to be voted for, you know, just for the overall bond. But we put out lots and lots of information surrounding that, so. Um, and, and our plan has changed again and again and again as a result of public input. Um, so, you know, to say that we, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying that, that I think we have been upfront and saying, you know, I mean, the opportunity to have an existing auditorium in a gymnasium for elementary schools is almost unheard of. Um, and so, you know, and then us having to purchase other property. And so, you know, we, I mean, we were, you know, I mean, I've had expressed that to the city manager and the mayor multiple times and, and, you know, said, hey, you know, the, the option is, you know, help us, you know, sell the property and then we'll find an alternative site, but understand there's a limit based on the bonding criteria and the timeframe for building the school and getting the kids in. So, um, it looks like we're getting to that now, and I'm, I'm very happy about that. Uh, hopefully things will, will work out.
I hope so.
And I do, I do, I do wanna clarify, um, there is a difference between a national historic area, designated area like here in Palaca, the North and South Historic District, and a specific structure being declared a national historic structure like St. Mark's Episcopal Church. So there's, there is a difference. And, um, and, you know, the, the criteria for, uh, building in a national historic district is that you have to build it historic-looking buildings. I mean, that, that's essentially what that is. Now, the building, an, in, an existing building, if it's on the National Historic Register, you know, you'd be almost impossible to, to tear that down.
We're, we're about to have one at one of our facilities down in your area, Sid Martin Building.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And, and we made it very clear from.
Actually, that's Ms. Wagner's area, sorry.
We made it clear from the beginning and tried to explain this, the reason Miller was on the, you know, the side of our new school. It's been very clear, and you, you said this today, is there was no more area at the current Milton Bernie, and we did not have the funds to buy another site. And, uh, and I, I know that there was even, um, I think Ms. Miller brought up in a, one of our larger sessions about purchasing more land and making it part of the high school. And that, you know, we'd already gone to the state and gone through that process. So really, we had no other options available to us until, you know, we've had the conversation about a developer, you know, buying the property and donating the site. So this is really the, the first time we've had another option than we've previously had.
Well, we've, we've had a long history of cooperating with municipalities throughout the county or, or district, whether it's to run city water and sewage like Prior Board that's done all the way from Crescent City to Crescent City High School down Union Avenue for a half a million or more dollars. You, you know, and, and given the town of Wallaca, the old school, which is now their town hall, uh, town of Pomona Park, the old school there that was Redlands Christian Migrant, now they own all that. I mean, the school boards have traditionally done a, a lot. But this property, we, we did pick up adjacent property. I believe the, the, uh, I think it was Jody Delzel's sister that owned the house there by the driveway. I mean, we had to, we had to clean that up. I think the house burned or, or did something some years ago. So, I mean, we've, we've tried to keep that, that, when I say we, everybody in the district for many years to keep that site as pristine, as nice as possible. But when you look at, something being called on the National Register of Historic Sites, look at the old first accredited black high school in the state of Florida over here. That, it was the warehouse and the bus compound. It fell apart. And the state wouldn't grant money. No one would give you funds to build a wooden building like that anymore. And I know that former State Representative Joe Pickens had, had, had appropriated a quarter of a million dollars to plan how to fix it, and that they never, that was expended and it never happened, and it's just a mess. So, you know, either, we either gonna go on to the future or, or, I don't, I don't know what this, I guess this, some people would wanna keep, kind of carve out a part of that school and leave it sitting there in the middle of that property? Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. DeVito? Yeah, could you speak to that? I'd like to just, I'm, I'm curious, what, what is it that you, you're interested in?
Okay, well, first of all, um, the building I don't think is in the shape of the other school that you mentioned. The, I, I think the building is in much better shape. Um, number one, I think we do not want the building number one torn down until it's determined, is it possible to incorporate that in the design of the new school? And certain, I mean, it's a, and I understand the difference between a structure that in and of itself is on the National Register and a district. But every building in a district is very important. So, uh, just number one, it shouldn't be demolished until there's a determination, can it be repurposed? Um, the rest of the buildings on the site, I don't fall into that category. Um, and one point I would like to speak to is, um, really, the, the planning, ideally, to optimize the situation for everyone, would've been more helpful to have been started with the City Commission last year. Um, because the City Commission as a whole does not have the information that's been presented here and has not had the benefit of whatever discussions have gone on with individual, um, mayor commissioners or the city manager. We just got that information about a month and a half ago. So, as I said, um, we would like to work with the school district in every possible way. And had we had those discussions earlier, and who knows, maybe we could make a little time and room. Um, I think we need to have some planning discussions, and it's possible that we could bring our own resources to the table. It's not possible from our budget, but it might be possible from other sources.
Well, that's, that's fair. I, I understand what you're saying now a little more. But I know that we're under time constraints to get an appraisal and figure out, you know, how to kick the ball right on down the road and, and keep going. Once this process starts, it, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna have to keep going. And I, who doesn't empathize that people have a historic feeling? I mean, Marjorie Neil Nelson wrote so many articles for so many decades in the Courier-Journal that, you know, it just seemed like that was part of the morning news, and I thought they worked out of the women's club. But I guess they don't, uh, the Historical Society.
Society, well, I, I think we are now, but the, the main point I want to leave you with is, A, there should be no premature demolition of a contributing structure until you know for sure that the property is either going to be sold or that there's no way it can be incorporated. And the other is, um, please do work with the Crescent City Commission as a whole and keep us informed as to what is going on. That would be helpful for the residents. Uh, that would be helpful for everybody in town.
Okay, well, I know, I don't know how long you've been in Crescent City, maybe, maybe decades, I don't know, but.
Yes, my family moved there in nineteen thirty-nine, and my father and uncles all graduated from Crescent City Schools. My uncle and my dad and brothers all walked to school from Main Street over to South Prospect. So, long time.
That's wonderful. Okay, well, I just, I know that we've never not agreed with trying to help the city when we can.
Sure, I understand that.
When I say we pass boards, but go ahead, Greg, if you wanna address.
I'll come up if it's okay. And we will be at the City Commission meeting next Thursday.
Good afternoon, Greg Kelly, CRA Architects. First, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh, I wanted to address a couple of things. First is, um, paperwork being submitted on, on tearing down the buildings. We have performed what's called a custody on the buildings there. Um, that's a report that DOE recognizes, and what you do is you go in and do an analysis. I don't know if everybody understands it, so I'll explain it. And you look at the existing buildings, and what DOE's interested in, is it more feasible to rework the existing buildings that are there or tear them down and build them new? And it's a very pragmatic, objective, it was actually a formula. You go in and plug the values in and numbers in, and it spits it out and tells you what it is. We have done this, but it has not been submitted to DOE at this time. We, we've done it so as far as paperwork to tear the buildings down to DOE, we, we haven't done that at this time. It hasn't been submitted. We did some early looking at all the sites and everything to help with the bond referendum, make sure what was being said was truthful and we could do what was being said. But as far as specifically doing the paperwork, no, it's on hold pending what we find out about the property sale, perhaps. Um, another thing, we haven't looked at any new buildings on that site yet. We haven't done any design work. We haven't done anything. Could something work around building one? Perhaps, but I can tell you, there's a lot of buildings gotta be put on that site. That built, that site is not real conducive for a school the size we're talking about. And, and unfortunately, we're talking about tearing down buildings one, and the other buildings kinda juxtapose that is DOE wants me to keep the building on the north end of the site. It's not old enough to tear down yet. So the eyesore to everything or the building up there, uh, we can't, right now, we don't have permission to tear that down. So we're gonna have to work with it. So, um, there's that building, there's the gym, there's the auditorium where we're looking at keeping and renovating. There's building one now that's left. I have to sit down and see where we're gonna put a thousand students on that site right now. I, I don't know how it's gonna even work there. So, but when we get ready to sit down and do that, we will gladly sit down and meet with you and show you what our thoughts are and everything else. We just haven't got to that point on this specific site yet. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
But in all that, we, we still remember that that's the property that we own in Crescent City. And so if something doesn't work, then, I mean, so, um, we all know that the, the Hayfields is a much better place. And prayerfully, just like Ms. Gilliard just said, prayerfully, that will happen. But I, I have to say that it was January seventh of two thousand twenty-one when this rolled out. So, Ms. DeVito, for you not to be aware, because I know it was in the Palaca Daily News, and I know when we passed it. So you, and we met with Mr. Miller, Mr. Steggi, no, Mr. Miller, the mayor, upright in this room. And that was early on, too. So, um, you, you, part of communication is you have to communicate. And maybe, maybe through the newspaper, we were communicating, but we didn't hear much back except for Mr. Miller and a few other people that are not here and not in the Historical Society. So we can take some blame for not communicating, but you have to reach for things, too. And you have to talk to people.
The whole point, let's keep in mind, the whole point, and this is why this school's our number one priority right now. I was actually in that school today, and it is busting at the seams.
It is.
And our kids are the most important part of this, and we're gonna do everything we can to get them to a new structure that they most deserve. And everything else is important, but our kids are at the forefront, so, you know, that's the, our number one consideration.
And you're weaving school buses in off seventeen coming right on there. It, it's just, it's just awful. I don't know, that's.
It is.
I would wanna see, if I lived there, I'd want the buses out of there, but I, I don't know. That's just me. I don't live there.
That it?
But.
Anyone else to come before the board during this workshop? Anyone else? Okay, if not.